Looking for a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion carries with five yeses and two absent.
Okay, this is time of the meeting we open it up for public communications. This is the hearing of non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Mr. Mayor, we do have a few speakers here. Our first speaker is Chris.
My name is Christina Kellman. With, I'll take my deep breath, I came running here from the river. I'm with Sunset River Resort in the Soul of California. My nonprofit is celebrating life when event at a time. It's been a few years since we've been able to kind of do anything fun within our community, to assist the people in our community, so I'm really excited about this. So on September 25th, alongside with the Salmon Festival, we have an event that's taking place at Sunset River Resort, which is called the Soul of California Benefit Concert. The concert is organized to do three things. One, to keep awareness of the community of the Berry Creek from the North Complex Fire because of the ongoing needs that they still need with rebuilding their community and bringing their families back home. So then the second one is for the Dixie. We want to be able to raise some additional gas cards so that way the families can get to the resources that they are needing to further assist themselves until they can find out where they're going to be established and where they're going to be calling home. The number one of all of these is we're really honored to pick a nonprofit, the Tiny Homes Foundation, because of the great things that they have done within our community, but not just our own community with building homes, but they also build homes in Oregon for the families and the community that suffered homes and lost their homes during the fire. But also with everything that they do within our community. They're always one of the very first nonprofit organizations that you will see that will go where somebody is in need. And I just have, we have a lot of love for them. The Soul of California is put together as a benefit concert series. We're committed to one year of creating events that will feature a nonprofit within our community or surrounding community for their efforts that they have contributed to. The City of Oroville family, to any of the other communities around us. So we just want to kind of re-
Yes, two minutes.
The next speaker is the cameraman.
Good evening, Oroville City Council. Boy's number two tonight, a little earlier than usual, but nonetheless, I'm here. I was going to speak about something else, but I have to wait on public records requests and so maybe by the next council meeting, be able to speak on that. But not going to take up too much time, but I will touch on a few things, or try to if I can come up with a few things. But mainly, I just wanted to, on my mind tonight was just perfect example, two minutes, how fast that can go, how quickly it can be eaten up if you don't really prepare and what you wanted to say. And I feel that, you know, three minutes wouldn't kill this council to have an extra minute for speakers to get what they need to say, be better prepared, come across more smoothly rather than rushed. And I understand, you know, some meetings will get more than 10 people, but, you know, I've been going to council meetings for over a year and rarely, you know, if there's more than 10 people here, hey, something's bigs going on in the city. But I, you know, we're not a city like the City of Anaheim where I went for council meetings well over a year and we've had it where maybe 10 people show up, maybe 102 people show up. And that's happened. And I've had to sit through three hours of people speaking at three minutes each, but they may not have all ate up their three minutes. Some of them I know very well did, including myself. But they all got their individual three minutes. And that council is there until well past midnight. Now, I know we're not the biggest city like Anaheim down in Orange County where we're going to be here until midnight, but I don't think it would be a killer to give an extra minute of time during public comment. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kay Castro.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I wanted to thank our Parks Department because they are kicking some trees out there to get ready for the Salmon Festival. The downtown trees have been all trimmed, all been trimmed upstairs at Centennial Park. They were planting some shrubs today. Looks great. There's those cool grates that go around the trees, so it covers up the squares. I'm sure there's a technical term for that. Very exciting. And I just stopped by a business downtown and she said, "Oh, I'm so excited, I've been wanting this forever." So it is making a big difference. I'd also like to thank our Police Department. I have been watching and seeing more and more presence downtown. And I think it makes a difference as I see more presence coming and going. And I just wanted to thank the police for having a little extra presence there. And on my soapbox, of course, come to the Salmon Festival on Friday, to the soiree dinner at 6:30 on Centennial Park and see how beautiful it is. And then on Saturday. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cam, Cam Tocker.
Good afternoon, Councils. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to go as fast as I can here. We developed the Vista de Oro subdivision, which was a fractured subdivision during the boom. There was 20 homes completed and 70 lots remaining. Normally, without COVID, I would have met all of you guys by now, but unfortunately, that hasn't happened. Just to give you a little bit of history on that project, when we first looked at the project, we had a very short amount of time to make a decision. So for developers, one of the biggest challenges is going into a new municipality. We have never done anything in the City of Oroville. Basically, city staff can either make or break a project. Coming into Oroville, immediately, Mr. Mayor came and saw me, asked me if I ever need anything to come see him. That was very comforting because if staff isn't performing, I can always go talk to the mayor. You know, so this project was not easy, but we're basically nearing completion. So there are some people I would like to recognize as a developer to say that the building inspectors, Joseph and Hugh, were great to work with in planning. Don and Connor were great to work with. In Public Works, Matt Thompson was great to work with. Jody Huntsberger was literally amazing. Her permit fee estimates were to the penny. She would process 15 permits for me in 24 hours. You know, but the biggest heroes on this project was Wes Earland and Leo DiPaolo. This subdivision was not what we thought it was. It was fractured and the city, in its past regime and staff, they had never approved this project. So, you know, we almost walked from the project, but basically what we did-
Mr. Mayor, our next speaker is Linda Draper.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to make some comments that I would like to be on the record for this meeting. I attended the LAFCO meeting on September 1st and I was really surprised to hear of some information submitted by the City of Oroville. In the August 26, 2021 report, the document the city submitted to LAFCO for that September 1st meeting states the following. Resolution number 8917 was passed and adopted by the City Council of the City of Oroville on December 15, 2020 by the following vote. The yeses were Smith, Pittman, Goodson, Draper, and Reynolds. The noes, none. Abstentions, none. Absent, Hatley and Thompson because they were both recused. The actual vote was Reynolds, Pittman, and Smith voted yes, while Councilor Goodson and I voted no, and Councilors Hatley and Thompson were recused. Unfortunately, there are no minutes available from 2020 on the city website, but the video on YouTube remains. The part of the discussion and vote about Ready Creek begins about 39 minutes in and goes to about an hour and 22 minutes. Now, you might wonder why this matters. It matters because the public has a right to accurate information on how city councilors voted. This should be an easy thing to do. And I have my own ideas of why that information was submitted incorrectly, but I'll leave other people to their own thoughts on that. But it was signed by the mayor and the city attorney and the city clerk here. So I would hope that any minutes that the city has will be corrected immediately. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that is the last of the public speakers.
And with that, we will close the part of the meeting for public communication. Looking for a motion to adopt a consent calendar.
So moved.
The motion carries with five yeses and two absent.
Mr. Mayor, since the public hearings are timed specific-
Want to move on to regular business?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm going to skip down to item number seven, a regular business, because we have to wait till 5:15 for the public hearings. So, regular business, item number seven, consider an approved job description for recycling coordinator.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. This is a request to approve the recycling coordinator position. This employee would be dedicated to working with Recology in seeing that the CalRecycle mandates are met as well as the interest of the city with regard to waste diversion and reporting. There is currently four diversion programs in effect. The fifth program, SB 1383, will come into effect January 1, 2022. The city is pursuing consulting services initially to guide us through the ordinance and the compliant processes that come with the Senate bill. And then to guide this newly hired recycling coordinator into success into this position. Additionally, we're working with Recology to amend their existing franchise agreement to meet the impending SB 1383 requirements as well. Salaries and benefits of this recycling coordinator position will require a budget adjustment and will come from the Public Works Administration budget. Requested actions are to approve the job description as written and the addition of the CalRecycle position into the salary schedule as well as authorizing staff to fly the position. Any questions?
Do we have any comments from the public on this item?
Mr. Mayor, the developer Cam that spoke before is raising his hand, but he raised it during, so I can see if he wants to speak on this item.
Okay.
Cam, are you wishing to speak on this item? Mr. Mayor, we do not have any public comment on this item.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Thompson wishes to speak on this.
Could you clarify for us this SB number?
Senate Bill 1383 is a very robust Senate bill in which our commercial businesses will be required to divert organic waste for human consumption and non-human consumption into various bins. So there will be no organic waste that will be allowed to be diverted to the landfills. It will have to all be recycled accordingly and and there's a lot that goes with this and I apologize. It kind of, we can get into the minutia all evening on it. But the consumption or the organic waste for non-human consumption would end up being recycled. And then the organic waste for human consumption would end up being diverted to organizations that would then, like the Hope Center or the Rescue Mission or the Food Bank in Chico that could then reuse that food. And so when I say waste for human consumption, it's like a restaurant makes too many trays of lasagna. Then those trays would get diverted to one of those resource centers. So there's just a lot that comes with it. There's added recycling bins that come with it. There are reporting requirements and milestones that need to be met annually with this.
So it's primarily in regards to food?
Primarily in regards to food, but not necessarily food. It can be organic waste as in tree debris, things of that nature as well.
It's mainly edibles. I mean, what they're talking about is edibles that have to be diverted from our landfill. We can't be taking that. They're all organic waste such as trees, limbs, clippings, things like that. So anything that's edible and consumable needs to be diverted to an organization that will direct that toward human consumption. Non-edibles can continue to go. This is mainly for commercial application. Residences are, you're not going to be required to have a fourth can or anything like that. Your organic food waste can go into your tree trim container that you have right now. But there's also procurement requirements for this. The city's going to be required to procure a certain amount of renewable and recycled materials into our organization. I think Don did the number yesterday and it's 16 tons that we have to buy each year.
1,600 tons.
1,600 tons of recycled organic materials to use in our operations, so-
We have to buy?
Yeah, you have to procure somehow. I mean, so-
Mulch, whatever it may be.
Yeah, we have to look at, and we have to figure out what is the dollar amount? What does that equate to for a ton of material? I mean, so whatever that material may be. So we have to figure all of those things out in order to be in compliance. That's one of the last things that we have to do, but it is something that's going to be ongoing. I don't see SB 1383 getting any smaller. I see it getting bigger and increasing. It's something that we're going to have to stay on top of. We're kind of a little bit behind the eight ball right now because we have until the end of the year to get an ordinance adopted that contains the provisions of this. So we have to be moving on this sooner than later.
Councilmember Pittman?
Thanks, sir. Classically, this is another state of California unfunded mandate. They're not providing us any, so they just figure out the world, we're going to find money to pay for this position, which is, thank you very much Sacramento. The other thing is it puts a mandate on all our commercial folks in town that is almost over the top of being borderline ridiculous. As you've mentioned correctly, the inorganic waste, other waste. You're going to have to separate your waste before it ever goes anywhere. And this just puts another mandate on us that really has nothing to do with us. It's just they're pushing their weight around, telling us how to do things. To the city attorney, has any city been able to jump this into the courts and try to defer it yet, or?
Not to my knowledge yet. I think most, I'm going to give you just my opinion. I think most cities are probably plugging their nose and saying, we'll go ahead and implement it. I'm not sure there are many cities that want to be looked at as the one that fights something like this because it has a, it has a green element to it, so to speak. So I don't anticipate a challenge to this one.
Okay.
If there were a challenge, it might be along the lines of a funding requirement, not challenging the bill itself, but challenging, you know, look, state, you're requiring us to do something, but you're not paying for it. Having said that, there are some recycling funds that are coming our way from the state and I suspect that they may call that the funding for this. But I don't expect a challenge to this one.
And that would be the only hope, that we actually get some reimbursement for our costs out of pocket, which is just beyond, didn't we have a presentation on this sometime ago?
April.
Yeah, April. And it just, I mean, it was just like, holy crap, they're nuts. I don't know who came up with this thing, but somebody needs to really reverse their knowledge about this topic because this is not going to be easy, it's going to be hard. I have to agree that we do need this position as it is a unfunded mandate. And I believe, if I recall, there was substantial penalties that they were able to apply. So again, it's state telling us what to do. And here we go. Thank you, appreciate the presentation.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, just amen to what Councilman Pittman said and everything. I totally agree with. And we did have that presentation by CalRecycles, which, yeah, I think this puts an undue burden especially on smaller community, rural communities like ourselves. Maybe in a large city setting, you could see where it could make sense having a whole separate piece driving around collecting, you know, food waste. Where you have a lot of restaurants, you know, large cities, okay, that might make sense in certain settings, but in small rural communities, like, it just becomes burdensome. I think it's going to increase food costs, it's going to increase cost at our restaurants. And ironically, when you look at the amount of waste collected, I think we'll spend more money driving around spewing CO2 into the atmosphere than whatever we're trying to fix. I mean, that's the irony of it, where you have small communities like ourselves. You know, you're really not, you're not really accomplishing the end goal, which is a greener environment. You're actually producing, I think, more byproduct than you are fixing it. So that's just the unfortunate, one size does not fit all in the State of California, yet works for San Francisco or LA. You know, interesting enough, on the unfunded mandate, I think it was the City of Oceanside, they launched this as a pilot program to see how well it can work. Well, I think it was grant funded at that point, so yeah, it didn't cost them that much. But now the city's having to carry the weight without any funding or help. And in your rural communities like ourselves, it's a burden. It's a burden on our restaurants, on our grocery stores, it's really a burden on everyone. And it really, it's just a nowhere. So it's really unfortunate, but you know, again, it's something we have to do. But I just think it's really important that the public understands that when they see these increases in cost or extra burden, it's not us doing, it's not this city council imposing this. This is a mandate, unfunded mandate, well set, and we just have to grapple with it. So you guys got your work cut out for you, certainly. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the dice? Looking for a motion to approve the job description for the position of recycling coordinator. And approve the addition of the recycling coordinator position in the master salary schedule in alignment with associate planner and authorized staff to begin the recruitment process for the position of recycling coordinator.
So moved? A second.
Motion carries with five yeses and two absent.
Moving on to item number eight, authorization to purchase new police vehicles, fire vehicle, and public works vehicle.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. What you have before you for consideration is the purchase replacement of some vehicles into the city fleet. We have, are looking to purchase nine 2022 Ford F, I'm sorry, not F, but Ford Police Interceptor Explorers. The staff report says that they will be 2021s. I consulted with the dealer yesterday and 2021s are not going to be available now. We're going to have to go to 2022s. So we are looking at replacing those. In our fleet right now, we have some that are hybrid electric cars. They don't work for police work. So those will be taken out of the fleet. There's five in there now that are there. Those will be taken out and be pushed to other departments within the city, within code enforcement and things like that. So those vehicles will be utilized. Five of these will replace those. Four will replace some of the higher mileage vehicles that are currently in the fleet. So we are looking to replace those. We are also looking at replacing one command vehicle for the fire department. Right now, one of our battalion chiefs is in, is actually using a vehicle that belonged originally to code enforcement in, I think, like 2003, 2004. So it is a older model F-150 that is ready to be retired from that type of service and pushed into service somewhere else in the city. So we will be retaining that into our fleet as well. So that's also included in here. And then we're also looking at a 2021 Ford Transit cargo van. What we want to do with that is make a survey van out of that. We'll have various survey equipment in it to include expensive pieces of aerial equipment that will be stored in there. That way, it is readily available and accessible 24 hours a day to not only the Public Works Department, but also the Police Department and the Fire Department that could be utilizing this piece of survey equipment. It'll have proper signage in there. One of the biggest problems we run into now is that we're out doing things and people don't know what we're doing because there's an old white Ford Explorer out there and nobody knows that's a city vehicle. The only way to tell that it is, is that there's a washed out emblem on the side and an E on the plate. If you aren't looking for those things, you don't know what it is. So this van will be more readily identifiable and go into our fleet. It'll be in addition to our fleet. We're looking to add those. One of the problems that we ran into with this is the availability of vehicles. As everybody knows, our car dealers are having a very difficult time getting cars. The van and the F-150 pickup will come relatively quickly. I mean, those, the dealers telling me they can get. The Explorers, we may be looking at into December, maybe as late as March, before we see those vehicles come. So what this staff report includes is just the price of the vehicles. It does not include any of the outfit. What I mean by that is the lights, any of the signaling equipment or anything like that that's going to be necessary. We will return at a later date with those prices once we actually get the vehicles because we don't know how long that's actually going to take. The dealer's optimistic, but we'll see. Beans, that some of the vehicles had to change. We believe that there is going, there could potentially be a residual savings, but there also could be an additional expense. So with this report, what we're asking for is a 10% contingency in the event that the cost does go up, so we don't have to return to council and do that. This is state contract pricing. We don't know what that pricing's, what it's going to be for that, but sometimes what you'll get is you'll get a state contract price, but then Ford will offer different incentives and you'll get a better price than even what the contract pricing is. So we'll know that once we get closer to that point. So we're just asking for a little bit of room, just in case the price does change. So again, what we're asking for is authorization to purchase nine police vehicles, one fire vehicle, one public works vehicle. This was all in your budget that you approved in July. It was an anticipated expense. And we are ready to pull that trigger if the council is so willing to allow that.
Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from the public?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any public speakers on this item.
Mr. Pittman wishes to comment on this item.
Thank you. Mr. LaGroine, when I'm looking at the specs, I see the word hybrid. We're not buying more hybrids, are we?
No, sir, we're not buying hybrids. That was brought to my attention. We are absolutely not buying hybrids.
And my experience is, not just here, but other departments are having tremendous problems with the hybrid police cars.
Yeah, the problem with the hybrid police car, number one, is they make no noise. I mean, and what the problem with that is, is that when there's chaotic situations and there's people moving around and things like that, the noise that the car puts off is a warning that, hey, a car's back in. We've almost backed over a couple different, I haven't, but others have almost backed over a couple firemen in the parking lot because a fireman will be walking across the parking lot. A cop car will start to back up and, you know, they don't see the fireman and the firemen don't hear the car. So it's just, it's a bad situation. Plus there, when you're driving them, there's this jumpiness or lurchiness to them that is not something you'd want because it's switching back and forth between gas and electric and it's just, it's just not refined enough yet that it needs to be into a law enforcement fleet, I don't believe.
Well, I appreciate that because I do see the word hybrid in the specs and it's, it's good that we're not purchasing them because I've heard many other horror stories beyond the functional thing, but mechanically, they're just not ready for the service that you're going to see in city service like this.
Absolutely not. We have discussed that with the commercial fleet dealer at Oroville Ford and he is well aware that we do not want hybrids.
Okay, good.
Are there any other comments from the dice? Having none, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the Public Safety Department to purchase nine police vehicles, one fire vehicle, and one public works vehicle from Oroville Ford utilizing state contract pricing as outlined in the staff report.
So moved?
Mr. Councilman Smith, could I also ask you that if you're so inclined to allow staff to include a 10% contingency for overrun?
Yeah, with the addition of a 10% overrun.
Second, Ted.
Motion carries with five yeses and two absent.
Okay, we have about 15 minutes before we can open.
Mr. Mayor, we have a couple options. You can take a break if you so choose, or we can move on and do council announcements and take care of that business now, or we can take a break, come back, do a public meeting, hearing, then take care of that business, then do the next public hearing.
Okay.
It's up to you.
Is anyone ready to do any council announcements? Okay, moving on. Would you like to speak?
I can, I just want to just, there was already several that spoke during non-agenda items about the salmon festival, but it is happening this Saturday. Downtown business, they have a lovely area that's set up, they're going to be the farmer's market, and then parking lot A will have vendors. Also, the Oro Dam Cruisers will be set up in the downtown area for a car show, which is really just a great, I think, and it's just a wonderful opportunity to kind of get back to some level of normalcy. And then on the levitop, there will be various vendors up there as well, and including Centennial Plaza, that area will be being utilized, which is, I think, a first for the salmon festival. And that's also where the soiree for the nature center to help fundraise for that will happen on the Friday evening. And then also, we're going to be utilizing the convention center, the recently rebranded from municipal auditorium to convention center where the YMCA has taken up residence, and they will be presenting in that facility, the YMCA, as well as the Sam Norris Awards, which will be presented right around the 11:00 AM hour, both for 2020 and 21, and also the arts award as well. So there'll be several presentations, and LPO, Alliance Band, will be playing in there. The tribe, the Mighty Tribe, will be opening with an opening ceremony at 10:00 AM. So that's just some highlights throughout the day. I think it's just going to be a great day, it looks like the weather's going to cooperate. Certainly, we appreciate all of the partners and various service agencies in Orville. Without them, there's no way this event could come off. And it is a scaled down event, just because COVID has, you know, been challenging, a lot of vendors and others have, are a little bit hesitant to come on board, just because it is a public event, a public congregant event. And so, that being said, throughout the event, there will be hand sanitizer, mask, you know, washing stations, so all of those PPEs will be available for the public if you so choose to use that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to thank you for all your hard work and everyone involved in that. Councilmember Smith, you, the chamber has been really putting in a lot of overtime on that. And anyone else, I'm not trying to leave anyone out, I'm just very, we're all very busy on our own stuff, and sometimes it's, we don't always get to see how much work everyone is doing, so just want to let you know that you and your team, I really appreciate that, really thankful to see the Oro Dam Cruisers back involved, back in business, because I was a little worried that they were going to be nonexistent, and there were some people that stepped up and picked up that ball, and just really thankful for that. Excuse me. Are there any other council announcements? Having none, is there any future agenda items? Councilmember Pittman?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to maybe have us take a look at raising the public speaking to three minutes and adding councilmen having the ability to ask for clarification of the speaker for, say, two minutes. I've noticed the city of Chico does that, when the public speaks up, the council member gets an opportunity to ask a question back and forth for clarification of whatever they're talking about, which I think might be a valuable thing because the best communication is both ways. So that's my suggestion, and maybe we could take a look at that and see how we can fit that into Rosenberg rules that may have an application here, because many people are getting cut off when they should be able to finish their message.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just want to add, Councilmember Smith? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I don't like the fact that a speaker doesn't know it's coming when they're online.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, yeah, and so at very minimum, we need to somehow fix that, so there's some sort of audible warning, so they're able to wrap up their comment, because, you know, what was being shared there, I think was rather important, and that was cut off. So if we can somehow address that, just the mechanics.
Generally speaking, and Jackie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that in the upper right-hand corner, when you see the clock here, typically the speaker will have the ability to see that clock as well.
It wasn't running tonight.
I was just informed that it can be seen on there, it was on the ones, I don't know why it wasn't here, but it was running up there.
Yeah, it was up there.
Yeah, I didn't see it, so, but okay, I appreciate that, so I don't know, there's a way to let them, they know.
No, it's a good point.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Administration reports, Mr. Legrone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to take a minute and acknowledge our public safety department and our public works department. As we all know, there was a crime committed last week that included burning down of an apartment complex that was under construction. It was a very intense fire. Our fire personnel, they arrived on scene rapidly and began their firefighting efforts. Fire was so intense that particular night that cars that were parked across the street were actually melted from the intensity of the fire, as long, as well as vinyl windows in an apartment complex that was adjacent to it. So you had the space between the apartment complex and the road, the road itself, and then the space between the edge of that road, but the fire was that intense. So they did an amazing job containing it to just the one, because right next to it was another one, another apart, set of apartments that is, was, I'm going to call it raw wood, and very flammable, and, you know, they did a wonderful job protecting that structure. While on scene, the police department was able to develop some suspect information, and shortly thereafter, the suspect was taken into custody. This was an effort of all of the police department. What we don't know was going on at the same time that that was going on, that there was a shooting that occurred right down the road on Grand Avenue. It was nice to watch the police department seamlessly work both incidents with limited personnel and obtain positive results for both, a positive meaning that somebody is in custody. The person is still in custody, it is an active investigation looking at that particular crime, and we are going to continue to pursue that and request the highest possible sentencing for that person if it gets to that point that the person's convicted. I mean, so we are not taking this lightly, we are looking at it very seriously. Arson in our community is unacceptable, it's unacceptable at every level in our community. The damage to this apartment complex is somewhere around $5 million. That, and that's coming from somewhere, from somebody. The irony of the whole thing is the person that we believe is responsible for this at this time was, would have been a person who would have been eligible for one of those apartments. So we're trying to do things in this community to help folks, and there are other folks that are trying to tear it up just as quick as we can do it. So our fire department and our police department did a very good job that night. Now, part of the complication of the situation as it went on was an individual was seen going into the apartment complex that was burning, but was not seen coming out, which meant that this was going to change from not only a firefighting situation, but also to a recovery situation. It wasn't going to be rescue because of the condition, it would have been recovery. Knowing that, we reached out to our public works department. Within 30 minutes, we had public works operators, we had, Don was there to facilitate and coordinate the effort with that, but we had operators there, heavy equipment standing by, and hand crews ready if we had to go through that and look for, to do a recovery operation. And it was just nice to see everybody in the city come together, working toward a conclusion of the situation. We had electeds on scene, you know, and I think everything that happened that night, I think, made a difference with the developer. I mean, because the developer could have easily threw their hands up and said, we're done, finish what they have and walk off, I mean, but they didn't. So I think that the positive response from our city, from our city workers, from our city electeds, and everyone else has been a very positive outcome to a very negative situation. So I just want to say thank you to our fire department, thank you to our police department, thank you to our public works department, to Wade and Zach, the guys that were standing by, ready to operate the equipment if we needed it. Incidentally, Wade was actually on vacation that particular day, had just got back home and got the phone call and came right down, didn't hesitate. So it's just nice to see that kind of commitment from our personnel to our city, to our community, and to one another, so I just want to say thank you.
Vice Mayor Thompson?
Yeah, actually, I have a question for our attorney. Throughout the state, we have cities that have declared their cities sanctuary cities. Is it possible for our city to declare the city a sanctuary city for the Constitution? I know part of our oath is to protect the Constitution of the state of California and the state of the United States, and there's been a lot of mandates, I think, of overreach of our state that I know a lot of citizens were really upset about, to declare this a city that stands with the Constitution of the United States and rejects any mandates that violates the freedoms that are protected by it?
The short answer to your question is yes, that's certainly a possibility, if this council sees fit to do that. The question is what, you know, we'll have to draft some resolution or some sort of a declaration, you know, that matches that, the sentiment of the council. There's no reason why you can't do that, sure.
Because I would absolutely love if, if Orville, you know, and the reality is, we make that oath when we're sworn in.
Sure.
So it's not outlandish to say we were sworn in to protect the Constitution of the United States.
Sure.
So therefore, any mandates that are contrary to the Constitution of the United States, we reject.
Yeah. That would be a subject that could be discussed at a future council meeting, can't do it tonight, of course, but because it's not listed on the agenda.
Is there anybody else that would like to see that on there? I mean, on the council? I think it takes two, or just the mayor.
It does take two.
Yeah, I'll agree with that.
Okay.
Councilmember Smith, do you wish to speak on that?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, but I just wanted to dovetail on to Mr. Legrone's comments, and it goes back to something we all are aware of, you know, you see, you see something, you say something, and you report. I think I'd mentioned this before, a while back, I was in one of our grocery stores, and there was an issue going on in the back where a person had locked themselves in a restroom. And I noticed that the young employee was following me around, and it was because she was scared. And I asked her, well, why don't you call OPD to the retort? Well, they don't do anything, and I thought, oh, my goodness, you know, where do we get that perception? Yes, they do, yes, they show up. And so, and they did, right away, and they took care of it, but it just goes to the, you know, you see something, you know, you think about out at, what, the incident, the fire incident that was just mentioned. Mr. Fowler, who's on, Kent Fowler, who sits on the Feather River Parks District, he'd come up to me and, to Mr. Pittman, and had mentioned that somebody had said they had saw something, a woman in that area, and reported that out, which the two of us went over and informed, the three of us went over and talked to OPD. Now, I understand that ultimately, it was because of the cameras that led to this individual being captured, but, I mean, what if that wasn't the case, and that report, you know, ah, should I, should I not, you know, I don't know, you know, that whole thing. But I just really want to encourage the public, you know, we see things, things that don't look right, don't feel right, man, make that report, make that call, don't just assume either somebody else is going to do it, or it won't matter, or I feel, you know, silly making that report, you know. Man, I'm telling you what, one phone call, one report can make the difference. I even think about that young lady that just now, I guess we're waiting for that ultimate forensic report, but that was, you know, murdered, you know, Florida, and I think everybody's aware of that situation, but, you know, had maybe that phone call gone out a little earlier, maybe that young lady would still be alive today, you know, we don't know. But, but we can make that call, and I know even me personally, I noticed a little bit uptick in just public agitation recently, and I've made two calls myself where I've seen actually a domestic violence issue where somebody was hitting someone. And I'm telling you what, OPD, I mean, they were like on it, like right now, they were there in sec, literally seconds. So you, and you don't know, you know, did my phone call save that young lady's life? Maybe, I don't know. But I guess we just, we just all need to do as citizens, you know, I always think of John F. Kennedy, you know, ask not what your country can do for you, but ask what you can do for your country. And then somewhere along the lines, we kind of, along the way, we've kind of lost sight a little bit, maybe from time to time, that ideal, that we are all participants in this, you know, experiment called democracy, republic, democratic republic, that we are. So I don't know, just take a moment to kind of just encourage everyone that way. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that, you know, we also, that particular night, we had a lot of assistance from CAL FIRE, CAL FIRE Investigations, and also from various volunteer organizations, and also from the alcohol department, the Department of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms. I mean, because this is a very significant case, arson is a significant crime, and we are looking at multiple other things, so we are working arson in our community right now. If you are out there, you know, we're on to several of you, it's just a matter of time until we say hello.
Councilmember Pittman?
Thank you, I certainly appreciate Mr. Legrone's comments and Councilmember Smith's comments about that incident, that event. I want to add another comment that, from a technical point of view and fire suppression, the guys did a hell of a job. I mean, when you place your apparatus and your aerial ladder, and where you do those things makes the eventual outcome difference, and where they put everything in place was right on top. I mean, I wouldn't have said you could have done it any better, so compliments to them and the other crews that came in from CAL FIRE, and I think there was two ladder trucks working there. And the placement of a fire pumper and to put the master stream to protect the other structure, those are things that sometimes get lost in the public, they don't really realize that happens, but it takes a lot of expertise to know when and where and how to do that. And I just want to send compliments to the department because they generally don't get that. They get the, oh, yeah, the fire's out, but the other thing that happened is all the hose lines being placed the right places, and hopefully we won't have people driving over the hose lines anymore. Speaking. A large five-inch hose, let me warn you, if you decide to drive over it, it's very, has a high tendency to high center your vehicle, and you'll be stuck there because it's pretty big, and it's something you really shouldn't do. But other than that, the effort was very well performed from a technical aspect, and I just want to add that compliment to the members in the department and all the agencies that came and participated. Thank you.
Amy, did you have anything to say? Mr. Attorney? Don?
Yes, you may have noticed somebody in an orange vest in the historic downtown area that is pushing what looks like a janitorial cart. Well, that is our barrier removal team, and so they are grinding down the raised areas of the sidewalk in our downtown area to remove those trip hazards. So they've commenced, they're doing a great job, they're actually moving fairly quickly. Also, I spoke with our consultant for the municipal services review today, and she has promised me that we will have a final draft of that MSR document by next Wednesday. And also, we received a request from a gentleman by the name of David Lee that we've worked with for a number of years with the Chinese Temple and Museum Complex. He will be bringing up a group of about 20 to 25 students and colleagues to review the Chinese temple and the artifacts that we have within it, so I'll bring back an informational staff report on that October 5th.
Thank you. Ruth?
Interest rates continue to stay low, so we're pushing forward on the pension obligation bond, I should have something on the next agenda for you to review. We're scheduling a rating review with standards and poor, so the city could get a credit rating. Made a lot of progress on our software RFPs, we picked the payroll software, we picked the financial software, and we also picked a permitting and land management software, so that will also be coming to you in the next staff, in the next council meeting. Also be bringing you year-end results in the next staff, our next council meeting, I keep wanting to say staff report. And also, we're moving forward with a master fee schedule review, so we'll be reviewing all of our fees soon.
Great, thank you. And with that, we are going to open the public hearing at 5:20. Item number five, first reading of zoning code amendment ZC 21-03, proposed revision of Orville Municipal Code, Chapter 15.36, relating to mobile and manufactured home installation standards.
We have our assistant planner Connor Musler via Zoom to present the staff report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Reynolds and council members. Connor Musler, Assistant Planner. This item is a proposed revision to the Oroville Municipal Code, OMC Chapter 15.36, relating to the city's regulations of mobile and manufactured homes. As currently written, OMC Chapter 15.36 is broad and only requires that the exterior style of all structures and occupied mobile homes, which are constructed, reconstructed, or placed in the city, be compatible with the existing surrounding neighborhood. This results in a wide range of ages and designs of manufactured homes that may be installed within the city. Staff often receive inquiries regarding age, design, and types of allowed manufactured homes. And having a more detailed code section can help make it easier when responding to these inquiries. To encourage the installation of quality manufactured homes that align with the long-term vision of the city outlined in our 2030 general plan, staff utilized Government Code Section 65852.3, the Town of Paradise, City of Biggs, Butte County, City of Rockland, and City of Santa Rosa's regulations to prepare a more detailed code section. Some key changes to note include adding reference to manufactured homes, a prohibition on install of manufactured homes that are older than 10 years from the date of manufacture, this aligned with Paradise's, Butte County's, and Biggs' regulations, and more specific design criteria, including roof pitch, eaves, and landscaping requirements. Staff recommends approval. In addition, the planning commission unanimously adopted Resolution P 2021-14 at their August 26, 2021 meeting, recommending approval of the proposed ordinance.
Are there any questions from the public on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I have not received any public comment on this item.
Closing public comment on this item, Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, just a comment and a, and a question. One, I, I think that's a good idea on the 10-year. And just FYI, if anyone is looking to take a used manufactured home and relocate it, typically, that is not eligible then for financing. That to be financed, you must buy it direct, you know, from the dealer, manufacturer, and because they feel that the structural integrity has been compromised when they're relocated. So, if anyone's ever, you know, in, looking at that, that is definitely something that you need to consider for loanability purposes. So, I think the 10, even the 10-year, you could even question that. But I understand that, you know, not, not everyone is in that position. But, and then the second question, and this is the question, that's a statement. Second, the question I have for Connor, and I, in speed reading through that document, are sprinklers going to be required? Because I understand with manufactured homes, they are not federally mandated. But now, new construction for residential is. So, is that going to apply, or how is that being handled?
So, sprinklers currently are not within the draft code section. We don't require them within the city unless state law, state requirements do. I believe there are certain areas where fire sprinklers are required within manufactured homes. For example, I think in the wildland urban interface, certain areas like that that have high fire tendencies. But we are not proposing to add that unless the state mandates it.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Having none, I'm looking for a motion to waive the first reading and introduce by title-only ordinance number 1855. So moved?
One second.
Motion carries with five yeses and two absent.
Still have five minutes for item number six. We have to wait till 5:30. Would you like to take a brief break, Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Please. Councilmember Pittman, did you wish to speak?
Actually, I, I did forget about something I should have mentioned. Sierra Heights Apartments up above the hospital provided a tour for many of the city's staff. And I got a chance to go to that. And they explained what's going on with their facility and the expansion of, I think, another 40 on top of the hill is being, is in dirtwork right now. I got to say, it's a great place to visit. I mean, you talk about a place to live, especially with a view. In fact, one of the residents said, "If you sit around and watch this view any longer, I may have to charge you for sitting there." It really is a substantial view from Oroville. And the apartments are cool, comfortable, very clean, very easy to get to. You might think it's because you're up on the hill, but your parking is almost at the same level as your apartment. And if not, then you have elevators to get to. So, some very, really nice apartments. I believe they're all retired, retired, correct? Retired seniors, and then the 40 more units on top of the hill. So, just a great addition and a huge asset to the community. And they have more projects coming. So, it was good to see that and nice to walk the housing. And the tenants were happy, that none of, they're all full. So, for us to see any of them, they had to visit. And the tenants were more than happy to welcome us in there. So, that was very nice of them to do that. So, thank you for that tour. And I think the council members really missed something if you didn't get a chance to go through the place. It's really nice.
A couple more minutes of that? Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Vice Mayor, could you give us a, kind of some feedback on the event that we sent the shower trailer to and the attendants? And I heard nothing but good stuff. I heard absolutely no complaints from anybody in the city about noise or anything like that.
The people that came to town that did take advantage of the, the city shower wagon were very appreciative and made sure that it was, this, there were some things that had to be done to set it up. I guess the, the company that we bought it from didn't include sewer lines or power lines or anything to hook it up. So, I'm glad that the grateful, they are, they were grateful that the city took care of that. Now, it's fully ready to use for the city and other, other items. But very clean, left it very clean. And it's a great resource for volunteers who come to the city for different events. So, they were very grateful.
Where did they all stay?
What's that?
Where did they all stay?
They slept at a, in neutral location.
Okay.
It might have a cross on the building.
My understanding is the event was well attended. There was approximately, I think, 350 people that attended the event up at the municipal. So, it was a, a nice event that, you know, served our community well.
If I might, can just add a comment to that. So, I, I think it was great to see our, our local community and churches working together on an event like that. I just, I just think that's wonderful. I hope to see more of that into the future.
I'll go ahead, we got another minute. I'll go ahead and say something. A lot of people have watched my, my son, well, not really grow up, but for the last four or five years, they've, they've watched him in the public eye. And, and he turned 21 the day before yesterday. So, really proud of him, deployed in the United States Navy. I just, you know, I can't, I can't get enough of my kids. So, anyway, it's just really nice watching those accomplishments, not to see them waste time with their lives. So, good for them, proud of those kids. Pastor Malone?
I would like to invite you all to the Ebel game on Friday. And we'd like to see the mayor and the vice mayor do the opening flip on the JV and Carson Football Team.
Sounds great. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Pittman, did you have something else to say?
Oh, I'm-
Okay. All right, well, I think it's time to move on to item number six, closeout of community development block coronavirus response, round one grant 20-CDBG-CV1-00100. That's why you're here.
Please turn your mic on. Good evening, Mayor Reynolds and council members. Tonight's public hearing is required by the state CDBG in order to close out the grant number 20, CDBG CV 00100, which is the first coronavirus allocation. City council held a public hearing on August 11, 2020 to hear input from the community members on the use of the CDBG coronavirus one allocation in the amount of $114,870. The funding was made available pursuant to the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security CARES Act, which was signed into law on March 27, 2020. The funding was specifically targeted to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus, and to provide funding to only activities with a very narrow scope to use within the 12-month period. Staff recommended using $95,342 of these funds to assist the Hope Center with the acquisition of the new permanent location on Fifth Avenue. The building accommodated the mandatory shelter-in-place and social distancing requirements at that time, while also maintaining needed services to the homeless population in Orovo. Such services included food bags and box distribution, meal services, and clothing areas where they could shop. The additional $19,523 was retained by the city to cover general administration and staff time associated with the activity. The acquisition was completed several months ago and recorded. Part of it also was to pay off a loan that they had with the seller. And all of that has been recorded and transferred. And so, the, it went really smoothly, and this is the quickest grant closeout we've done. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions from the public on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any public speakers on this item.
Do you have any questions from this dais? Having none, looking for a motion to authorize the closeout of the community development block grant 20-CDBG-CV1-00100, which expires April 30, 2022.
So moved.
One second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. It's a great job on that. Well, we-
Motion carries with five yeses and two absent.
With that, we will adjourn till October 5, 2021 at 4:00 PM. Close the public hearing.